Testing 1, 2, 3. This will be the September 18th, 2013 City Council meeting.
All ready? Everyone ready? Ready, everybody? Good evening. I'd like to call the order, regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, September 18th, 2013, approximately 7:00 PM. Will you please join me in a moment of silence in the pledge? And please keep in your thoughts and prayers for families of the tragedy that happened up in Washington at the Navy Yard, please. Thank you. The pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to our first agenda items, citizens' comments. This is a time for citizens' comments on non-agenda items. This is non-agenda items. The floor is open. Hearing no comment, across citizens' comments, and move on to city council comments. Who would like to start?
Glad I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Just attended one meeting this past couple of weeks. That was the Sampson's Island Park Committee meeting, which was last night. Just the one thing that came out of the meeting that we'll pass on to council is that they're planning to have a spring open house either the weekend of March 22nd or March 29th. And we'll all get invitations for it. But we've got a meeting, good meeting. They're still moving forward with everything.
You mentioned the massacre at the Washington Navy Yard. As it so happens, I grew up one block from there. That Navy Yard's on M Street, and I grew up on L Street. The Navy Yard was viewed from out the back of our apartment. It really felt close to home. I attended the South Beaches Coalition meeting, and we worked on revising the inter-local agreement so that we could make provisions to avoid not having meetings because of a lack of quorum. That agreement will be going to each of the respective four councils, and so we'll be seeing that pretty soon. I attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting, and that meeting was hosted by our city and Palm Shores. And I really find it unfortunate that the current president seems to be more concerned with getting out early so that he can get home at an early time than he seems to be concerned with conducting business. That meeting, which all of a sudden was supposed to last till 9:00, was adjourned at 8:00 before people even had a chance to be served their coffee with their dinner. I am going to be pursuing this because I think that the league is not going in the right direction right now. I think it can be doing better. At one of our recent council meetings, there was a request for the staff to start uploading board committee agenda packets to the city's website. And in the staff's usual reply, they said, yes, we'll do it. And what I realized is that it's adding another stressor to our staff. Our staff right now is still trying to do as much work as the staff was doing when it had several more people onboard here at City Hall. And I think our policy needs to be that we will accept any recommendation for improving our service, the information that we give to our residents, but it will be done as our staff can reasonably do it. The long nights, the weekends, they need to stop. Our staff is entitled to a personal life. And I'm going to be making some recommendations for amendments to the council policies and procedures at our next meeting in accordance with the council policies and procedures. We cannot vote on them at the meeting at which they're discussed, but I will be presenting some amendments that I think are needed at our next council meeting. Thank you.
I also attended the Florida Space Coast League of Cities meeting on the 9th, and it was hosted by, as Lorraine said, Satellite Beach and Palm Shores. The guest speaker that evening was Brenda Fettro, and at one point in time, she was the city manager of Cocoa, and she's now the district vice president for the YMCA's of central Florida. And one of the things that I got out of her talk was some of the things that we're talking about with wellness programs in our city with, you know, our residents and our employees. And that's basically, you know, what the YMCA is looking for. It's kind of not just a place where kids go to play. There's a lot of adults that use their facilities, and these are the things that keep us viable as we get older, because some of us are getting older. Not me, but there are other people in the city, so. The other thing that, on the 10th, I was at the rec board meeting, and, you know, I thanked the rec board for all the time that they put in coming up with the fee schedule that they had been working on over the last year and a half. And at that meeting, they voted for the use of the Civic Center over here. There are users that we looked at, you know, going up on the fees that they were having to pay. And what they did was they looked at phasing in the people that use the Civic Center more than once a month for the people that are doing it just once a month. They're, you know, they're proposing to go up on the fees for those. The other thing they looked at was community events in the spring of 2014. They weren't really in favor of reoccurring events. They were looking at more or less just one event, and they had several suggestions, one being a tailgate cook-off party, drive-in movie, food trucks with muscle cars. So the drive-in movie thing, I guess, is that the thing we were talking about, like, you know, on the side of the Schecter Center there and between the two buildings? I thought that was a great idea. And the last thing I have is, I got a phone call from Carol McCormick. She's the mayor of Palm Shores, and she asked me if I would be willing to, along with Mayor Tully from Titusville, be a member of an advocacy committee that's being put together by the League of Cities here to work with our local legislators. And I've agreed to do that on behalf of Satellite Beach, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I also attended the Space Coast League of Cities. I attended the board meeting, and I want to talk about an issue that obviously popped up in the paper the last couple of days. And if you live on a canal, you would see what has happened to the lagoon system. And I can tell you that the mayor, Cocoa Beach, myself are working on a resolution and to try to get funding to do the research on the lagoon system to really find out what's wrong with it. It's a far-reaching project rather than just this area. The lagoon stretches over 170 miles, goes from Titusville all the way to Stewart, and the lagoon is not the same as it goes south. And I think it's important that we find out what's wrong, because in certain areas, there's health warnings out, especially in the Stewart area, to people not to go in the water. Don't touch it. Don't get it on your skin. And with over 400 pelicans, porpoises, and manatees passed away this year in this lagoon system. I've lived here a long time and spent many hours on that lagoon, and I can never tell you a time that that ever happened, ever. And so hopefully, we'll get some funding to make people aware of it. I think it's a lot more aware now than it was last year, a few years back. So Space Coast League of Cities will be working on that. That's all I have. Okay, moving on to city attorney's report.
I have nothing.
Moving on to city manager's report.
Yes, I just wanted to remind the community as well as council that we do have our Satellite Beach 5K flag run this weekend, the 21st. It's still, we're still accepting registration, so you can contact the rec department as well as register on-site. So we encourage you to attend. If council can't actually participate in the event, we encourage you to stop by and see the work that the recreation department has done in putting this together. It's been a big endeavor for them. Carrie's wearing one of our shirts. Very nice, fancy shirt. And we have really neat medals for the people that are placing. I think they did a great job on putting those together. And also to highlight the recreation department again, credit cards will be forthcoming in the next couple of weeks, so we'll be able to accept payment quickly. October 3rd, 2013, from 8:30 to noon, the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization will be hosting a Brevard 2040 transportation symposium. The flyer's in your agenda packet. It's called "Planes, Trains, and Automobiles: Plus Boats, Bridges, Roads, Rockets, Buses, and Bicycles." I thought that was, it was interesting because in the past, it's been called "Planes, Trains, and Automobiles." And now you can see some of the changing thinking of complete streets and some of the other ideas that are coming in to bring other transportation systems into the discussion. So that's, it's an interesting thing to go to. If you haven't been to one, so I encourage you to go to. All people are invited, provide residents, elected officials, business leaders, and everyone that would have an interest. The city has received our building code enforcement evaluation report. This is actually one part of it, which is called the Building Code Effectiveness Grading Classification, or BSEG, because we always talk in acronyms in government. And we received a rating of Class 3 for 1 and 2 family units and Class 2 for all other construction, which is actually an improvement since 2007. And I believe it's also the best on this side of the beach, or on this side of the river. So I think we've done a pretty good job there. It basically shows that we are running a pretty well-run building department. The ISO rating is an insurance rating program, for those who don't know, that provides rating credits to individual property insurance in recognition of community efforts to mitigate property damage due to natural disasters. So that, the building part is one part, and many times you hear about the fireside. This is the building side. I do have that report if you're interested. And I have one item that I had to add on at the last minute. I apologize. I really dislike doing this, but we have an opportunity that's in front of us, and I'd hate to miss it. We have, we've met with the East Central Florida, I always want to call them the East Coast, East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. They are submitting a grant to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration Broad Agency Announcement Opportunity. Basically, it's a grant. And what they'd like to do is look at the advancement of climate and resilience adaptation strategies to enhance community resiliency. So basically, putting the data together as well as putting the strategies together, which fits very nicely into our intention of doing the adaptation areas, which we just adopted in our comp plan. This letter of support is a letter of support for the grant, which they need by September 30th. I will make this an agenda item for October 2nd, so you can hear what they're going to do, and the community has the opportunity to listen and speak on it. And if you dislike it, we can certainly withdraw our support, but we have to get this to them soon. That's why I had to put it on the agenda. I did get an update from Ms. Tara McHugh, who's the leader of the pack, if you will, on this item for the planning council, that they would like to make Satellite Beach the pilot community, which I think is very exciting. This is also a big cost saver for us, because as I started looking into the materials for what we'd have to do to create, you know, the science behind the implementation strategies, the mapping, and the regulations, I realized that we needed an environmental consultant, and I was looking into the cost of that. In this case, this would be done for us, for free, at this point with the grant funds. If we do have, if they are unable to get the grant, we can still go through them at a very reduced cost, about a fraction of what I was anticipating through a private consultant. So this is a great opportunity for us. I also had a long discussion after we had the planning council, Brevard County Natural Resources came to meet with us, and then the director of the regional planning council as well, Ms. McHugh, was here. Mr. Hugh Harling is the director now of the planning council. After we met and went on a tour, I met with him individually at length regarding some of just the concerns that I had. And I think he's on very much the same page of being able to protect people's property rights and understand that there's, you know, concerns about that. And then, and that I believe their leadership through this will be very much in that, within that mindset. So I'm really excited to see that piece of it. I'd like to thank John Fergus for bringing this to us. He was very much the leader in calling them to see if they were doing anything within this realm and, you know, coordinating the meeting and so on. Basically, he saved us a lot of time as well as money in getting this done, so I appreciate his efforts. So basically, we're asking for approval of the letter from the mayor's signature to support the grant.
Do you want a consensus, or do you want a motion?
I think a motion would be good for this.
I'll make that as a motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Gott. Do we have any discussion from?
Yeah, what is the motion?
The motion is to allow the mayor to send the letter in support of the?
Of the grant.
The grant. Okay. Is this the letter? And it stops there?
Yeah, except for the signature line.
Okay. And what is this page?
That is the executive summary for the grant. So that, I just gave that to you for information. And it's changed somewhat since then because they decided to make our community, the pilot community for the strategies, which is very exciting.
Okay.
Further questions?
Will there be any out-of-pocket expenses associated with it?
Not at this point, no. And so they will be here on October 2nd, and we'll make it an agenda item. They'll do a presentation of what they want to complete with the grant, so you can see their scope of services and the scope of the grant. And then the public would be, you know, of course notified of that. We'll make sure that we get ahold of the concerned property owners that were here last time and make sure they know and understand that.
Any further discussion? You have another one?
I want to make sure to clarify. I heard Mayor Breymer making the statement.
Correct.
Councilwoman Deane?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. And that'll be on the next agenda, correct?
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number seven, two proclamations. The first one I will do from the seat here, Patriots' Day, and then the second one, Constitution Week. So this is an official proclamation of the city of Satellite Beach, whereas September 11th, 2013 marks the 12th anniversary of an unprovoked and senseless act of terrorism on our homeland. Four civilian aircrafts were hijacked on September 11th, 2001, and crashed into New York City, Pennsylvania, and the Pentagon. Whereas, we will always remember the innocent lives of the U.S. citizens of all heritages, as well as visiting citizens of foreign nations perished as a result of those horrendous acts meant to terrorize our nation. And whereas, on this somber day, we remind all those who wish our nation harm that we stand united as one nation under God, vigilant in our fight against terror, and determined to continue as a beacon of hope and freedom for people everywhere. And whereas, Congress has approved, nor requests, that we observe September 11th as Patriots' Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance. Now therefore, I, Frank Picchino, mayor of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2013, as Patriot Day and National Day of Servants and Remembrance. And that's the proclamation. And thank you, Councilwoman Deane, for spearheading that.
You haven't signed this, have you?
I haven't signed it.
Okay, there, I'll go over some corrections with the city manager.
Okay. The next one I have is Rufus Fairbanks Chapter of the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution. Got that out. That's due in here, and I will present that. Your here is a proclamation that will give you a note of kin from the city. And it's an official proclamation of the city of Satellite Beach. Whereas, our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessing of liberty for themselves and their prosperity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America. And whereas, it is of the greatest importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the constitution in order to support it, preserve it, defend it against encroachment. And whereas, the independence guaranteed to the American people by the constitution should be celebrated September 17th, 2013, as designated by the proclamation of the President of the United States of America in accordance with Public Law 915. Whereas, the Rufus Fairbanks Chapter of the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution encourages the citizens of the city of Satellite Beach to read and get to know the Constitution of the United States of America. Now therefore, I, Frank Picchino, the mayor of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th, 2013, as constitutional. And thank you very, very much for that. Moving on to agenda item number eight. This is the FY 2013-2014 budget, and I'm open this as a public hearing for the proposed 2013-14 budget.
Yes, the proposed or adopted budget we have in front of you, or proposed to be adopted budget that we have in front of you, has only one substantive change, or was to the CRA, part of the capital plan, and that changed things throughout the budget. So that's what we highlighted and put in. And we also added a section on our stabilization reserve policy, just as an information piece for the budget. We included that as well for your information. So those are the changes. The pages that changed were included in the agenda packet, and then the full budget were provided to council, so you had the whole document in front of you. And that's all that changed.
Okay, thank you. Going over the first part of this, questions from council?
First part, 1076, if that will work.
Yes.
Any questions?
No, I have, okay. Any further comments from? At this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment on the budget in ordinance Hearing none, back to council. Jim, you want to read ordinance number 1076, please?
Ordinance number 1076, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the final levying of an ad lorm taxes by establishing operating mileage rate of 8.3206 mils for fiscal year 2013-2014, providing an effective date. This is the second reading ordinance, number 1076.
Move to adopt on second reading.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Vice Mayor Breymer. Any further discussion from council?
I need to, we need to amend your motion to include adopting it on first Florida statute, chapter 166, year 413B. We provided the trim notices and advertising as provided by statute, but we made a mistake on the actual ordinance advertisement. We got that out in six days instead of the 10-day requirement, so we need to adopt it per a different provision. Okay. I made the decision to have the meeting tonight instead of postpone the meeting, because when the trim notices went out, there were meeting dates in there, and I felt that it would be more disruptive to the public to delay the public hearing than to actually have it and advertise it late. The trim notice, though, all of the trim advertisements and all of the statutory requirements for the budget advertisements were done per the statute.
So what amendment do you need?
I need you to adopt the ordinances per Florida statute, chapter 1. It's part of your recommended action in your agenda packet.
First page.
Move to adopt ordinance 1076.
Are you amending your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll amend the second.
Okay, thank you.
In accordance with Florida statute 166.0413B. Is that, on second reading, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Vice Mayor Breymer. Further discussion from council? Hearing none, another one? Oh, excuse me, Jim.
Let me explain what is going on. What the city manager is suggesting is, is that this be adopted on an emergency basis on second reading to have the budget in place for the end of the year. And according to the statute, it has to be approved by a two-thirds vote. And my recollection of the cases under the statute is, is the council has to find that there is an emergency to adopt it. And I guess the emergency would be that to have the budget in place, all the other notices were out, including the trim notice for tonight's meeting, and the emergency would be to have the budget in place for the next fiscal year.
Is that an understanding we have, or do we have to have a motion to that effect, Jim?
That needs to be part of the motion.
Okay, that's, all right.
And so my motion will continue. And this ordinance is being passed on the emergency basis of the need to have the budget finalized by the end of September 2013.
And all the other trim notices provide for this meeting as the second reading of the ordinance.
I didn't hear that.
All the trim notices provide, this is the public hearing on the budget.
And it is noted that all of the trim notices advertise this as the second hearing on the budget. The requisite second hearing on the budget.
And I will amend my second. Okay. Most by Councilwoman Gott, amended by Vice Mayor Breymer. At this time, because we changed it, I'd like to reopen it up for public hearing. Any public hearing on this agenda item on Part B, ordinance number 1076. The floor is open for public comment. Need to come up to the mic, please. Please state your name and the resident. Okay, thank you.
My first time to do this. Janet Barton, Winchester Road, here in Satellite Beach. Two things. I would ask you if you could slow down a little bit. You're speaking so quickly that I can't understand what you're saying.
I'll be glad to do that.
Thank you. Did I hear you correctly when you said you preferred that the public not know about this until now? Did I misunderstand?
Oh, absolutely. No, what I thought, I was telling council, we had to make a decision whether we were going to reschedule this meeting or not. And I felt that it was more disruptive to the public to reschedule than to continue on with the meeting since the other advertisements have been out.
Okay.
But I would never want to hide anything from the public. That's not at all what I said in any way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Floor is still open for public comment on this agenda item number 1076. Close, citizen's comment portion of 1076. Any further comment from council?
Just one. Do you think it would be prudent just to hold a quick special meeting?
It's entirely up to council. I mean, I think most citizens, when they came to the meeting on the 4th, knew that the next meeting was going to be tonight. Every time you have to hold a meeting on the budget, you have an opportunity to change it. So the ones that are wanting to make sure that, you know, what they saw is going to be adopted are going to feel like they have to come to the meeting. So it's really up to you. I didn't think that, I thought it would be more annoying for them to reschedule the meeting. It literally was a four-day difference. And we had trim notices that actually went to every single address as opposed to a newspaper advertisement for an ordinance. You know, so I think the trim notice was a bigger deal.
So the trim notice went to everybody?
Yes.
The other notice is one that would have been in a local publication?
Right.
And if you don't receive that local publication, then you wouldn't have gotten that notice.
And then, and it was done in six days, anyway. So I apologize to council for this. We, you know, we were actually sick to our stomachs when we realized that that happened. And, you know, I think that kind of goes to the discussion of, you know, And, you know, I think that kind of goes to the discussion of, you know, we're just very, very busy right now, and we seriously regret that mistake. I'd be very upset about it if it happened all the time, and it does not, but I do apologize to council as well as to the public for this issue.
But everyone of the citizens did get the trim note?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, Lenore?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries. Five, nothing. Moving on to ordinance number 1077. Jim?
Ordinance number 1077, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting FY 2013-2014 budget, providing an effective date. This is second reading of ordinance number 1077. And if, assuming that there is a motion to approve, it needs to have basically the same predicate as the emergency predicate that we just talked about in the other ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment on 1077 from council?
Yes, there are two errors. In Section Two, Community Services, Special Revenue Fund, that's incorrect. It should be the, the correct name for that fund is the Community Services Fund. In Section Five, it says Community Redevelopment Agency Fund, that's not correct. The name of the fund is the Community Redevelopment Trust Fund.
The agency goes to trust?
And Special Revenue gets stricken from Community Services Fund.
Okay.
Got it.
At this time, no other further discussion from council, I'll open it up. Ordinance number 1077 for public comment. Floor is open for public comment. Hearing none, bring it back to council. Council on the motion, please.
Move to adopt ordinance 1077 on second reading on an emergency basis, which is the need to have the budget adopted by the end of September 2013 with all trim in accordance with.
Because all the trim notices provided this is the budget.
Because all of the trim notices provided that this is the budget public hearing.
I have a motion by Councilwoman, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Discussion from council?
Do we need that provision about the Florida statute on this one? Well, throw something in there about Florida statutes.
166.
166.
0413B.
0413B.
Amended? Yes, okay. An amendment by Councilwoman Gott, and the second by Councilman Breimer. Any further discussion from?
Just one thing. Courtney, thank you to you and Andy and Christine, all for getting everything together this year again. I know I said it before, but job well done. This is very well put together and much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lenore?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries, five, nothing to the staff. Everyone, thank you very much.
I have one other motion, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the entire budget document for submission for the GFOA budget award.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilwoman Montanaro to present the budget for the award.
To approve the entire document for submission for the GFOA budget award.
Okay. For any other discussion by council? Hearing none, I'll open up for public comment. Hearing no public comment, back to council. Any further discussion? Lenore, you poll the council?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Before we move on tonight, Andy, great job. Thank you. Christina, thank you very, very much. Really easy to read this year. I thought it was great. It was very informative. We could follow line items very easily, and thank you. To the staff, thank you.
Before you move on, we want to give our thanks to you, all of council. You all were, you know, have been doing budgets for a long time and you're surprisingly easy to work with. So I really appreciate that, and I hope, I really appreciate all the citizens that called me with suggestions and concerns and your input. I think all of it was well received. I hope we incorporated it, and you see that it was incorporated into the budget. And I'd really, really, really like to thank my leadership team and the staff. I don't think I've ever encountered such loyalty and sense of service in a group of employees ever in my, in the history of my career. So I'm very lucky to have them. I think the citizens are really lucky to have them as well as council. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Any further comment before we move on?
One more, I'm sorry. And then we have to thank Lorraine. Councilwoman Gott. Councilwoman Gott put countless of hours in editing for us into the budget, and we really appreciate it. I don't have the eye for that that she does, and it was well received. We thank you very much. And I mean, staying up late, coming in and sitting for hours with us, and we just really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Discuss Take Action on the General City Insurance.
I'm going to ask our Assistant City Manager, Andy Stewart, to come up and present this item, but before he starts, I'd like to just say that this is part of our overall strategy of your leadership team and your management team in basically not only trying to take care of, you know, the deficiencies in capital and things like that, but at the same time reducing our costs. So everything that we are doing now is looking at how we can do it cheaper and how we can keep the level of service but at a reduced cost. This is one example of one of the first steps that we are doing to do that. So I'd like to invite Andy to come up. This is his initiative, and I think he's done a great job.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The Agenda Item Number Nine is a consideration to approve Preferred Government Insurance Trust as the city's insurance carrier with some recommended changes to our existing coverages. These are basically other insurances outside of our health insurance that are within your community services budget, and those include general liability, auto, property, and workers' compensation. There's basically two large companies that are in the state of Florida, Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, which the city has been with for quite some time. They've done the city a great job. And then Preferred Government Insurance Trust, who kind of ranks right there with the Florida League of Cities, FMIT. So they're all reputable companies. We have requested quotes and told both companies to sort of get competitive on this because we were going to, you know, look at maybe trying to save some costs, and we were able to actually bring back some quotes that we felt were very competitive. I've had experience myself with both companies, and most recently Preferred Government Insurance Trust, where I came from, was who we had, and we found them to be very receptive and very accommodating to the city and, as well as the League of Cities. So we received two quotes, one from the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust for these coverages, and one from Preferred Government Insurance Trust. One's out of Orlando, and the preferred is out of Lake Mary. I have John, DeStefano. He's representing Preferred Government Insurance Trust. This is the company based on basically the price and some references that we've decided to recommend to you all this evening. The price came in at $233,000 for the same exact coverage. Actually, there's some coverages that are better for the city. This represents a total savings of about $73,000, as you'll see in your agenda packet for the city, versus what we were paying last year in last year's budget. The, he's here answering questions regarding, related to Preferred Government Insurance Trust. If you have any specific questions, he's actually an agent of Brown and Brown, and the PGIT is basically a trust fund. Cities such as Titusville, Brevard County, Nissichus County, just to name a few, are all in this trust fund. So we've done our research, and we feel that this is a good company to go with based on the budget impacts, as I said before. Some of the changes that the city manager wanted to look at this year was taking our employee dishonesty coverage, which was only $10,000. So if you have an employee that came in and, you know, for whatever reason stole $100,000 from the city, the city would only get reimbursed for $10,000. So we've increased that coverage from 10 to 100,000. We've also eliminated the workers' compensation deductible. In years past, we paid the first $2,500 per claim. We did an average of that for the past several years. It averages to be between $10,000 and $15,000 a year of additional cost, and these weren't costs for a budget, these were just costs that we were just funding as they came along. So you could take the $73,000 and really add another, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 on top of that, because the deductible now is zero. So the insurance company will pick up from day one of a workers' compensation claim. And then also, we reduced our general liability limit from 5 million to 2 million. And basically, there's a statute of limitation on this that, you know, if you sue the city, you know, a lot of times the most you'll get is, you know, I think $200,000, and there's a limitation set by our legislators. The only way to increase that is to have a special bill signed, I believe by the governor. John can talk more about that if you have any questions. But we were sort of over insurer on that line item. So we reduced that to kind of limit our risk. You know, a lot of people could see that, they'll obviously like to get as much as they can, and a lot of times if there's an executive order signed, I don't think the governor will sign a $5 million lawsuit against the city if we know we only have a $2 million insurance policy. So we were sort of, exposure was a little bit increased with that insurance. So the city staff recommends that we approve Preferred Government Insurance Trust. They have the similar services as the league, and, you know, we feel that, one more thing, the, if we, when we switch companies, will be, will be October 1st, there'll be no lapse in coverage. Any claims that take place before the league or before we make a change, if the commission decides, the council decides to do that, would be covered by our current insurance carrier. So there's no lapse in coverage. As I said, both companies are really reputable. Based on the savings, we wanted to bring this before the council and let you all make that decision. Like I said, I have John here from Preferred, and staff recommends approval of Preferred Government Insurance Trust.
Andy, thank you very much. Thank you for going through the process, and, I mean, the savings is great, and I like the process of looking at other carriers and so forth and just not taking people's word of that. You know, the price is right, and this helps us a lot. Any comment?
I have a question. We're saying we're going to decrease the general liability as a result of claims against municipalities, many cases being protected by sovereign immunity law. What kind of cases would they, would that be? Just some examples.
General liability would be bodily injury or property damage caused by the city due to negligence. So slip and fall is a common one.
Unrelated to auto. Does that differ?
Yeah, unrelated to auto, I'm sorry.
Right. A lot of times it would be slip and fall would be the major one.
Or sidewalk claims?
Yeah, bicycles, curb incidents, things of that nature.
And also, to let you know, much larger cities have a $2 million coverage.
Right.
So much bigger area with more, you know, things to, more hazards, I guess you could say.
I think 85% of the members of our trust carry a 1 or 2 million limit, and you guys, we're at 5, and we propose, we have quote options at 2 or 5.
Okay.
Other questions? Councilman David? Mark?
So just let me ask a question. The workman's comp came in at 78.8, and we're proposing paying 82.6, but that's with a zero deduction. So like one claim, one workman's comp claim would have put us basically to what we're paying right now.
You're absolutely right. You know, like Andy alluded to, when you trend, I mean, the city was averaging five to 10 work comp claims a year out of $2,500 deductible, the savings was $4,000. Two claims, you know, washed away all the savings, and that was not funded money, you know, something that you were paying as you go, where this, it set in stone with the budget for the year. You know, and the cost savings is still there even with that, you know, versus.
No, I think that's, that's a good plus for us.
Councilwoman Gott? Okay. At this time, I'd like to open it up for public hearing on Agenda Number Nine.
Roger Gudis, resident Satellite Beach. My question is, as far as the insurance carrier ratings, I believe there's, and I may be understanding, misunderstanding it, there is no rating for the company?
Correct. For both your current provider and our program, neither one is given a rating of an A, B, C, or D. They're trusts, so.
Correct.
They're not assigned that. However, there's reinsurance that both our program and their program purchases, and those are all backed by A-rated carriers, as is the League of Cities. So the programs are apples to apples as far as both being backed by A-rated insurance carriers.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comment?
Steve Headley, I'm still a resident. On the liability issue, I'm a little tad bit confused, and I'm not allowed to address you directly, or I look. If we're dropping the coverage from 5 million to 2 million, aren't we in essence increasing our exposure for a $5 million lawsuit? In other words, they will, the insurance company will cover up to 2 million, but if there's a lawsuit for 5, we're now on the hook for the other 3. Am I understanding that correctly?
If there's a lawsuit for 10, we'd be on the hook for 5.
I understand, I understand that, too. But in actuality, we're lowering our coverage and increasing what we're on the hook for similar lawsuits. I'm just making sure I understand.
Let me have the question answered for you. So we have it, who would like, Courtney, would you?
You go ahead.
You are understanding it 100% correct. You are lowering the coverage.
Okay.
The difference in price was $4,000 roughly, so it is, it is an option. Now, to your point with the exposure, there's a statute called sovereign immunity, where any, any claim over $200,000 in value has to go and be specially signed by, you know, legislature to even move forward with the claim. You know, as an example, some of the worst claims we've seen, you know, garbage trucks running over, you know, citizens, causing permanent damage, you know, based on historical data, there's also at most between 1 and 2 million dollars. I mean, you have the option there, it's a $4,000 difference if that's the route you choose to go, but some of the largest cities in the state of Florida carry $1 million worth of coverage, both through, whether it's FMIT or our program. That's kind of, 1 to 2 million is the kind of benchmark for that. So, yes, you're.
It's not my, I'm not saying, I just wanted to make sure I understood it. I have no position on whether we should do it, but it's, it's just, I was just making charges.
You see, you put it in historical reference, the city in its existence, I think, has only kind of, on one hand, had any that even peer six figures. It's not that saying it can't happen, but just so you, from a frame of reference.
Thank you.
The sovereign, the waiver of sovereign immunity statute establishes, if you don't have any insurance, the most that you can get a judgment for against a local government is that amount, which is either 200 or 250. For some reason, I was thinking they raised it by $50,000, but I may be wrong. And essentially, what the courts say is, is that to the extent that you have insurance, you waive your sovereign immunity up to the amount of whatever insurance you carry. If it goes over what you have in insurance, the sovereign immunity statute still kicks in, and you can't be sued. You can't get a judgment for more than that, and that's what the special bills are that people go to the legislature about. And basically, at that point, somebody has to sponsor the bill, and the legislature has to pass through, the legislature, and be signed by the governor.
And this is not related to auto or any, you know, police actions or anything like that? That's a separate policy. The other item, too, is, so we're, in my opinion, we're overinsuring ourselves right now, and we're also exposing our risk more. So if we did get a claim, then, you know, those claims raise our costs, too. So I think we should come in line with the other cities and reduce that.
Thank you. Still open for public comment? Hearing no public comment, back to council.
Make a motion to approve Preferred Government Insurance Trust as the city's insurance carrier.
With the recommended.
With the recommended changes to the existing coverage limits.
Would you amend that to add for a total annual cost of $234,610?
I will. Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Any further discussion from council?
This one, so as in your professional opinion, you're not, the 2 million is right in line with other cities that have bigger?
Yes. Out of 100-plus cities, 85 have 1 or 2 million. I mean, that, that sovereign immunity statute really comes into play. And you, whether it's law enforcement, public official liability, auto liability, every other coverage for liability, any type of liability, you're carried through with the full 5 million limits, as Courtney alluded to. So it's just general liability coverage, that one section.
Thank you very much. Any further questions from council? Hearing none on the north?
Counselor McGee?
Yes.
Counselor McGee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Andy, Christine, thank you very, very much. Staff, again, I'm glad, you know, we're looking at things and trying to keep our services up to, for the city and saving some dollars here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number 10. Discuss, take action on the request for funds in the amount of $1,750 to conduct an appraisal for the property at Patrick Air Force Base.
Thank you. Basically, what staff is requesting is the, is the approval of $1,750 from the Stormwater Utility Fund to conduct an appraisal for property located at Patrick Air Force Base South Housing Area for the potential partnership with Patrick Air Force Base to access land for a stormwater project. And this, this idea came out of the P4 project. And I know the Economic Development Commission hasn't announced that project yet, but basically, they initiated a partnership with the Air Force Base and all of the regional areas, you know, cities and local governments to create conversations about how we could consolidate services or resources to cut costs. And this is one of those ideas. So basically, the base has an interest in us taking over their fields. However, the interest from our standpoint would be, you know, we can always make use of any fields, but do we really need that? And it would be worth it if we could get the land for the stormwater project. So we would like to do, we can't really initiate any more conversations until we start value, putting values to all of this. And part of that is getting an appraisal for the property. So we would like to do that to continue the conversation. We did do some initial numbers that if we did take over the fields, it would give, it would be an additional $11,106 for maintenance a year. And then we'd also have an upfront cost of $200,000 to put restroom by the fields. Because their, their fields are, were built for the housing development, not necessarily for outside residents to come in. So we'd have to provide facilities, you know, for outside residents to come in. So right now, we're trying to come up with all the costs and the values. And, and, you know, one, the one that we have left is the value of the property. So that's, staff is requesting approval to, to seek that. We did get price quotes from three appraisal companies, and the lowest one was 1,750.
Question, um, I don't, to you or Alan. Obviously, we have stormwater needs in the future that are huge dollars.
Right.
And is this going to substantially, or at least help us greatly to have this retention area?
And there's, the location of it provides a lot of opportunities for partnerships, because it's right next to a state road, and then also across the street from a county enclave. So we can bring those parties in to look at a joint project if we could, you know, move forward with those negotiations.
I have, I have a couple of questions. What, what's the inventory up there for the fields? What, what fields are we looking at?
It's the baseball field and, and the football field. It's actually a soccer field. It's got the lights, the one with the lights.
So the baseball field and one soccer field?
Yes.
They play football on two. Are you only looking at?
The baseball field is the softball field by Publix, with the lights.
Okay, two different areas, correct. One is South Patrick, and one is the one by Publix, correct? Now, there's also, if I'm not mistaken of my memory, there's two other fields that are by the commissary and the?
The team center there.
Right. Are those fields?
Those weren't included in, in the, in the deal.
Let me ask you the question. Why, just kind of seems odd that we have the football field, just calling it that for the conversation, football field, and then on the other side of the whole complex, we have this brand-new softball field. So is this part of turning over more and more of that Patrick land to us?
They don't want to turn over the softball field. They just want us to maintain it.
Well, I believe that, that is the deal, that we maintain that field, which is the brand-new field. They built that 2 years ago.
Right.
And, and then we would basically run the football field slash soccer field that has lights on it.
Is that football field, will that meet the need for the football team? Okay.
It's a longer-term project, though. The, now, if we just did that football field, and we just did the maintenance of the softball field, that's a lease. That could be done really fast. But because we want to include the stormwater piece in there, that is a trade of land, which is a longer item. It'll be a longer, a longer road to go down.
So step back to the stormwater project. Can you go over that a little bit more? You said a trade of land?
Yeah, there's, there's the football field, and then there's a big green space next to it, which I believe used to be a practice field. That's what it looked like. And so there's no plans for that. And so, of course, you know, they go out and they say, ooh, look at this ice field. And I go, ooh, look at the green space for that stormwater project. And Alan's saying the same thing, because we have very limited space for TMDL improvements. So that would be a good win for us, to, we'd be able to get a lot of mileage out of that space for a stormwater project.
So isn't it, when, when that area develops, isn't it the developer's responsibility to provide stormwater?
Right, yes. I mean, if the development, if there, if there was any development there, yes, they would have to provide stormwater for the development. We're talking about a TMDL project that's dealing with existing areas that don't have stormwater.
Right. We wouldn't get any credit. What Hunt is doing now, they irrigate out of their ponds, but we can't get any credit for that because Hunt is a private company, and we can't get the TMDL credits or VMS credits for that irrigation. If we own that parcel and we maintain that parcel, then we can get the credits for it. And that is a plus for us because we could partner with FDOT, we could partner with the county, and make, get bigger bang for our buck.
Okay. I just don't know, right now, given the situation with the city taking on more maintenance and, and responsibility, if it.
Well, we would come back with all that for you. But again, we can't even continue the conversation until we get the value of that property. I thought the appraisal costs were pretty low. That is a good thing about, you know, calling and getting, with the price quotes, that we got a good, a good price on a commercial appraisal for that side of the property.
And the money will be coming out of the Stormwater Utility Fund?
Yes.
Yeah. On the budget impact, it says $1,750 for legal advertisement expense. Shouldn't that be for appraisal expense?
You're catching them, too. Good.
Also, the other thing I just wanted to clarify, too, is, you know, we're looking at a lot of different lots and parcels in our city that don't have the ability to do stormwater on their property. And this is a way of trading this area to be able to do some of the things that our residents on these little non-conforming lots that are along A1A, to be able to trade out their stormwater with this parcel that we're talking about doing. So this has impacts throughout the whole city. It's not just that area up there. This is something that we've been looking at. How are we going to make these lots viable on A1A? And this is something that will make that work. So you got to look at the big picture of this. This isn't just a stormwater parcel on this land. It's, it's for the city itself. We can use these credits to trade for the people that are on A1A that have these little lots. So this is a win-win for us. And, you know, the, the building the restrooms, I mean, when we ultimately look at all the figures, those numbers are going to be miniscule compared to the numbers that we would be looking at at doing stormwater projects throughout the city and trying to make these lots viable without that. So, you know, you got to look at all of this.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear for the public. What you're saying is that if someone, we, we acquire this as, for this purpose, someone comes in in the downtown Satellite Beach, wants to develop 100% impervious building, parking, they don't have to meet the stormwater requirements, they can transfer them to this property up north. That's what I'm, that's what I heard.
That's, yeah, that could be done if we had enough credit. So like, let's say we, we built the project, and we, we say, okay, we've got some unused, you know, capacity here, and somebody can use that. You can sell the credits, but you have to design it that way, and you have to design the project that way. Probably, if, it depends on the project. We'd have to, I can't really answer the question of whether it's possible down the road yet or not.
And when you say, we, when you say, we, the city develops the project, or an individual property owner develops the project?
We would be developing the stormwater project. It would be a city project.
But as far as transferring from this area where we have the non-conforming lots?
That, yes, that would be a city-initiated project.
But what if it were private? Could they transfer up to that stormwater pond? Am I, am I missing something here?
I mean, you can, you can do a regional system.
Well, mitigating, mitigating stormwater credits is kind of tough when it comes to St. John's. And I, to be quite honest with you, I don't know if that's a possibility, mitigating a private development with public land. I couldn't answer that. I could find that out for you. But I'm not, I'm not 100% positive on that. I think the biggest, the biggest plus for us would probably be mitigating with FDOT and the county.
Now, if, there are many instances of, City of Coco did it. I know the Merritt Island Community Development Agency has designed a regional system to sell credits to developers. It, so it's been done many times. And Titusville, right before I left, we were getting ready to design a pond for that purpose. So it can be done. But whether we can mix it with the TMDL project is questionable. I don't know.
Please, citizens, it's hard to hear. Please keep the comments.
It would be great if we could, though. It'd be a big benefit to our community.
Okay, one other question. This, obviously, look, I'm just looking into the future because we are going to be, you know, doing it. I don't know what the action's going to be, but I assume we're going to be doing this. Have, have we talked to Brevard County? Obviously, there's a benefit to Brevard County.
Oh, yeah.
As far as assisting with the purchase price, since they're going to be benefiting as well.
Well, I don't know if we're going to be purchasing. So that's why we need to look at the value.
Okay.
Because it may be that our annual, long-term annual maintenance costs of the fields may wash this out. But Brevard County has been a big participant in the P4 initiative, and we've, we've talked with them, you know, at length. And the, the people who are participating are very much the decision-makers of the community. So, you know, it's Howard Timpton, Virginia Baker, Parker, right?
Parker.
So all of the, the people who would be able to make that decision on whether to partner with us, and we've, we have been speaking with them.
I would like the opportunity to sit with Alan and talk a little bit more about the transfer issue, because I'm not real clear on it, if you, and Courtney.
Absolutely.
I have one question. If we did nothing, never built another building or anything, don't we still need those credits to make our, to meet the future for our stormwater, correct?
We're only 15% where we need to be.
So if we build nothing, this is definitely a plus for us.
To explain it, there's the difference between when a property owner comes and develops, they're mitigating their development. The city is responsible for mitigating past, past developments that don't have stormwater. That, that's what we're mitigating. So that's what a TMDL is. And that's, that's what we're, we're, that's what this project would do, is to, to take care of an existing problem, not accommodate future development unless we design a project to accommodate that. Now, the, the idea of selling credits to a developer is great, because you can get your money back. So it's a way to finance projects. So if it's, if we have, if the, the capacity of the project is greater than our need, then that certainly is a possibility.
Further comments here?
I really need to get more basic than this. I don't understand what's being asked of us in terms of money, and I don't understand what we're getting for the money. The proposal is for $1,750 for, to conduct an appraisal of the property for a potential partnership. What is this partnership? What are, what are we getting for $1,750?
We're getting appraisal of the property.
And that appraisal is for what purpose?
Is to establish the value of the parcel of land.
For what purpose?
So we can, we can eventually get it.
So we're looking at buying a million-dollar, almost 10-acre?
I have, what we're trying to do is make a trade. So I don't know if we're going to be buying it on.
And the trade would be?
The maintenance of their fields, and we'll, and we get the later. So we'll take over the maintenance. That, that's what we're trying to establish is, before we can start, the purpose of the P4 is to try to cut costs and increase combined resources on both ends. So what we're trying to do is make a one-for-one. So we, but we need to establish the value of the land first before we can move on with that project.
Okay. Let me finish my questions, please. We're talking about installing a restroom for an additional $200,000. What's, what's that about?
Because the property that's on the South Housing, that, that field, does not have a restroom facility. Because those fields were originally developed for the residents of the, of the housing development, you know, for the historic homes that were there for the military families. If we run the fields, we're going to have people from all over the city coming in to, to be there. And, and if they're going to be there for an entire game and things like that, then there needs to be restroom facilities for them.
And, and where would that money come from?
We don't know yet. We'll have to come back to you on that.
And what timeframe are we talking about for building those, installing those?
This is a long, long-term project.
Long-term.
Yes, ma'am.
Like, beyond our five-year capital improvements plan?
I would say beyond two, probably beyond two years, don't you think?
Beyond two years. And what's the timeframe for, we're looking at maintenance, annual maintenance costs for the field of $11,106. That would take a lot of years to make up for a million dollars worth of property. What's, what's the timeline we're looking at?
We don't know yet. That's, that's what I'm saying. Before we can start these conversations, we've got to get all the values together. That, that's where we're at right now.
Okay. And why are we paying for the appraisal?
Quite frankly, because when we do something, we're slow, but when the military does something, they're super, 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 super slow. And it's easier for us to, and I'm just being honest, it's, it's easier for us to come to you and do it than it is for them to go through their processes. And, and we literally had that conversation.
And, and what is the EDC's role in this?
They were the ones that initiated the entire initiative. So they have a, a big relationship with, with the Air Force Base. And that's a large part of why I wanted to become a member. So they have, they've always, they've, they've lobbied on behalf of the base. They're, they're big supporters of the base. They have a lot of connections with the base. And what they wanted to do was, what they're trying to do is helping the base cut their costs, and at the same time, cut our costs. And usually, you, we can do that with mutual benefits. And if you haven't heard of the financial issues at these military installations, they're, they're pretty expensive.
And at the bottom, you talk about maintenance of other recreational fields. That would also be part of the swap arrangement?
Right, the softball field and the, and the football field. Yes, ma'am. So we, we would basically get the appraisal, continue our negotiations, put together a nice big report for you, and bring that back to you, determine what, what we want to do.
Does the EDC ever do things like pay for appraisals?
No.
No, okay. All right, thank you.
So, and just to give you an idea, if we did go through, when, when we have a big screen space like this, it's advantageous for us because, you know, it would obviously reduce our costs if we could get it, because we wouldn't have to go through property acquisition on, with private property owners, go through, you know, hopefully, we'd never have to do it, but go through eminent domain and all of that. I mean, that, just, we're avoiding that here.
Alan, back during the limelight days. It was, when our teams went up there and practiced and all that sort of thing, it was probably not real warmly received. And there were times where we were, you're not citizens, you guys need to take off, that kind of thing. You remember those days well. And it was fair, because that was military housing and the whole thing. But I guess the, the issue I have is that, I think that whether it's with Kerry or with you or both, I think before we get too far down the road, we need to make sure that everybody knows what access our citizens are going to have to that, and what kind of plans Kerry has for rec up there and that sort of thing, what we're going to do right up front, because I don't want to see us go down this path and then, you know, we're maintaining the fields that not a person in this room can set foot on, that kind of thing.
Right. I think Kerry's been having conversations with the rec folks up there. So she'd be able to speak to that a little better than me.
The idea for Patrick Air Force Base is, the fields right now are rarely even used up there, the softball field and that lighted football field along South Patrick. And the only maintenance they're doing on them is having a guy go out and mow it. That's it. So their choice has seemed to So their choice has seemed to be not use it at all, let the grass grow high, or partner with somebody who has an interest in it. We really weren't all that interested necessarily in, in the sports fields at the first glance, but if we could get in with the um, stormwater, that makes a, a kind of a game difference to us. There would be some potential use by Patrick on those fields, but we would be the manager of those facilities and we would incorporate their needs and our needs. For example, the softball field, they have a couple of teams that play out there. They can't have a league because they don't put private citizens out there. We would run, we would be able to run the league for that and incorporate their teams there and then, then they're doing what they want to do on the softball field and they actually have a reason to be there playing. That's just a, an example. And um, Jack Madison from Brevard County was there and when he saw that field and heard about it, he was real excited because they've had to cancel their adult softball league at Hoover um, and some other places because they are not able to keep it running anymore. So he knows, he understands the um, need for something like that in this area. So it would be used.
So, you know, there was a time when Hitchcock Brothers Field, the fence was about two fifty and three hundred in center field, we played softball out there. I mean, of course, we can't anymore. So you're saying that the citizens, if we wanted to have a league out there, we could do that?
Yeah, kickball, family kickball, kickball league for adults, softball for adults. The field's three hundred, it's three hundred foot.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, with, with recreation, we can always use more space. I mean, that's, that's our programs. I mean, they're always asking for space. And, and Charlie's here, he could probably talk to you about how they want more space. Um, but, you know, the soccer and football leagues always need more space and that's just a fact and, and even though, um, you know, but I, I really don't really want to pursue that side of it without getting a benefit with the stormwater side.
And has the issue of access for civilians been addressed? I mean, how do we get out there?
Because the um, Pelican Coast is accessible now to the public, the fields that we're talking about are about a hundred, the entrance is probably maybe a hundred feet off of um, South Patrick and Sherrwater. You don't even go into their housing development to get there. You're not even inside their housing development. Um, the softball field, you just go straight through the development and it's at the clarion by the water tower. There's no gated community. Quite honestly, the choices for the Patrick folks there, the military folks there are, they are either going to see their fields, go to sea, get very high and be left completely unmaintained or mowed by a mower, or they're going to be utilized and they can participate with it. They, they don't have a lot of choices.
One thing, I, I sat in on some of those original P4 meetings and I know the government is very interested in doing partnerships and making it very easy to do. The fields are nice. My main concern is when I look at the cost of stormwater, what they project these costs of stormwater to be in five or 10 years to this city. We, we're built out and we don't have areas to put this water that we're going to be mandated to do. And so I look at this not really from the ball field's end, even though I'm very much pro-ball field, I'm looking at it, what are we going to do with our stormwater when they mandate this stuff to us? And if we can partner with people and make it work, it's going to save us huge dollars down the road, I thi, and hopefully for the little expense that it'll cost us upfront. Because with the state of Lagoon system and if people, they dump federal money in here, you're going to be mandated to do these TLD, these stuff that we're mandated to do now. And I looked at your projections on how much this is going to cost to meet compliance. I mean, it's more than the budget for seven years of the city. So I, I, it's fine from the recreation, I'm a great recreation lover, but I want to make sure that we're taking care of it on our stormwater because we're really built out, so.
The good thing is that all, all these other agencies are in the same boat, like FDOT and Brevard County, and that's why, you know, it makes the partnership pretty, yeah.
Let me open.
I was wondering, I, I can't tell, where's, and I should have thrown it.
One with the one. It's the property with the one.
Oh, here?
Yeah.
Okay.
At this time, I'll open it up for public comment on this agenda item.
John Fergus, one thirty-five, Maple. Just to put some facts on the table. The city has a huge inventory of impervious surface that the city owns. They're called streets. I was just doing some mental arithmetic and it's well north of a hundred acres. And we're going to be required to treat that water. We're not near there yet. And the TMDLs, like Alan said, they've let us get off for this first five years with fifteen percent. Take eighty-five percent, which is remaining, divided by two, and that's what they're going to expect us to deal with in the next five years. When Gordon England did his Stormwater Quality Master Plan, he had identified a bunch of neat projects. Like tearing down the uh, where the boat place is and the store beside it. One of his projects was for the city to buy that property and turn it into a pond. Somehow or other, I don't believe that's going to happen. He identified every available open space in the city. And that says the only thing left is buy properties and tear the buildings down. That gets expensive. I extrapolated out of his using very conservative extrapolations. And it is well north of seventy, that's seven zero, million dollars to meet the TMDL. So if we can get something like this that begins to nibble away at the edges of it, don't pass it up. And if we get some recreation benefit out of it, that's just icing on the cake. But this is a problem that's got to be dealt with. And that may help too with a hundred acres at some point. You know, that's, that's another burden on hand that we may be able to use on that for some reason. So. We're not committing ourselves. All we're doing is getting information so we can have an informed dialogue with some people. And I would caution, we might not want to give away too much of this to other parties if we can manage not to, not of being selfish, but uh, if we can use it, I'd rather us do it.
Thank you. Floor is still open for public comment?
Charlie Graham, six eighty-five, Kenwood. Um, as much as I would love to have another soccer field, for the soccer field, I do think much more important is the stormwater. So if we can incorporate improvements on the field, that's wonderful, but totally that's secondary. The stormwater really takes precedence on anything. And if we can, it's a lot cheaper to buy undeveloped land than it is anything else, we're going to need it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public comment?
Dale Abrams. Can you tell me where I can go to get some information regarding P4 initiative? A website, please?
Uh, no, there's no website. Um, but I have a whole file in my office. You're welcome to come and look at it.
There's nowhere I can go on the internet?
Um, I think there might be some.
The EDC?
Yeah.
I went to the EDC and I didn't find any information.
They haven't announced it yet. Um, but I do, we might have some websites of previous P4 initiatives in other areas, the, the other bases, yeah, California. Monterey Bay.
Okay.
Monterey Bay. Um, they're actually, their city manager was at the last meeting and he's a very dynamic individual.
There's no federal websites?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Councilwoman Gott, thank you for asking some, some very pointed questions. Okay? Um, the other thing is, the sixty thousand that we put aside for a football field, are we still doing that? Okay. And we're still going to keep up all the other fields that we have?
Yep.
So actually, what we're doing is adding more fields to our inventory of fields?
Actually, right now, what we're doing is getting appraisal to determine whether we want to do that or not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Floor is still open for public comment? Here in them. Come.
Rajagundis, resident Satellite Beach. Even though we are getting an appraisal for this and stormwater is an issue, um, because we are now pursuing grants for adaptation, um, is this going to ruin the possibility of development on, on the South Patrick property because of stormwater that may create a problem going forward, forward with developing the other property? I know this is an initial stage. And then I go to myself, we all, we all have these initiatives to save the lagoon, but based on a study that was presented not long ago, I'm starting to get confused here, we potentially may be underwater here within the next fifty years. Starting to scratch my head about that. Thank you.
Further citizens' comments? Here in them, bring it back to council.
Quickly, I have a couple of questions. Courtney, would you be kind enough just for the public to go over what a P4 initiative is?
Sure. Basically, it's a public, public, public-private partnership. And what that means is military um, installations across the country are trying to now, you know, before they were very much insulated, kind of like an island. But now they're trying to reach out to their surrounding jurisdictions and say, okay, we, we have a lot of the same, uh, you know, we buy some of the same things. We, we have to maintain roads. We have to maintain sewer lines. We have to maintain, um, you know, water lines. What can we do to partner to try to reduce those costs? We have, they have public safety. They have fire services, you know? It's, they're like small cities. In fact, one of, um, the, one of the things that have already come out is there's going, they, every military base has like a city manager that deals with the purchasing and, you know, manage the, uh, the facilities and things like that. And what they're, there, that individual will be now coming to our public managers' meetings in the future to keep that coordination going. But that's basically what the P4 initiative is, is to cut, to talk about, um, how can we partner on these like services? And instead of two of us doing it, one of us do it at a lower cost. And that's pretty much it.
And one other question. Alan?
Yes.
We heard something about the tearing down of structures to create stormwater. Um, reality, five years, 10 years, 100 years, what?
Reality is, we're trying to, we're trying to get to meet the TMDL through the BMA process. That, when we did the Water Quality um, Master Plan, those were options that were out there um, to help us meet the, the goals that we need to meet. Are they real goals? You know, I don't, I don't see us tearing down houses unless we can buy the property, you know, tearing down buildings. So we have to find other ways to avoid having to build those routes. And this is, this is one way to, to, you know, try to work that out. Another way is to partner with other entities. Just like on the Cassia project, we had in, in overage, in, in our nitrogen credits, sold to Brevard County, you get a hundred thousand dollars towards that project. So, you know, those are the things that we're looking at going forward. Nobody wants to tear down houses so that we can build a stormwater on that, you know, that's ridiculous. So we just have to find other ways to, to, to try to meet that eighty-five percent that we're, we're looking at in the next ten years.
Further comments?
You know, for those of you who have been here a while, when South Patrick Drive was widened, prior to that happening, DOT came in and did a preliminary study. And they had a little meeting up at one of the classrooms at Delora. And on the board, they had pictures of, from O'Gally Causeway up to Pioneer Causeway. And it showed all of the different areas through Indian Harbor Beach, Satellite Beach and Indian Incorporated area where they were going to have retention ponds. And at that meeting, I stood there and I looked at all those maps and the three or four spots in Satellite Beach that they had programmed to be retention spots were already being developed. That's how, that's how slow their process was at finding properties for stormwater runoff. Where we are right now is at a crucial stage because the things that Frank's bringing up are going to happen. The numbers that John is throwing out are real numbers. Um, you know, this is an opportunity for us. And do we want to look at parcels being a hundred percent build out, a hundred percent impervious? I don't think so. Because Satellite Beach still has setbacks. That's not going to happen. But what it's going to do is allow these people that own these properties to have some relief for stormwater. And that's what this eventually will do for our city. So, you know, those properties that were originally earmarked for wa, for water, they're gone. There's condos on them now and there's townhouses. Um, so this is an opportunity for us.
I have one other question. Um, this is a semantic thing maybe, but in the third line of your recommended action, it talks about uh, partnership to access land for a stormwater project. Are we talking about access land, accessing land or acquiring land?
Don't know yet. We don't know yet. I mean, not, all of these questions will be answered later. Um, we may.
But the potential is to acquire it rather than just to have access?
Yes, right. We could do a long-term lease. Obviously, it would be a very long-term lease. You know, there, there's many mechanisms to do this, so.
Oh, okay. A move that we approve.
Well, excuse me, just one second. I have one more council member that I want to say something.
The, the reference I made earlier about a hundred percent impervious was just a hypothetical. There were, the point I was trying to make is if you look at, let's use ABC Lecker as an example, with the deep retention basin that takes up a majority of the property, would that be able, would this retention up there be able to alleviate a private developer of that requirement? That's all I was trying to say. I'm not saying build out the city to a hundred percent impervious. So it was hypothetical to say, would it allow some alleviation from something like that so that we could adjust some of those non-conforming lots? So I just want to make sure that's clear.
My concern is mainly with the stormwater here. And the recreation facilities, if we have to manage that in order to gain the stormwater, okay, but my main concern is the stormwater. I think we have a lot of recreation. We've always taken care of recreation. I think we need to take care of the stormwater, at least have the ability to look into it. So, um, I'd like to see it.
Um, a move that we approve seventeen hundred and fifty dollars from the Stormwater Utility Fund to conduct an appraisal for property located in the Patrick Air Force Base South Housing area for a potential partnership with Patrick Air Force Base to access land for a stormwater project.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further discussion from council? Here in them, Lenore?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries, five, nothing. How we, we need a break, council? You'll take a break for.
We're almost finished.
You're going to do, all right. Um, moving on to agenda item number 11, take action on Resolution nine thirty-eight. Jim?
Resolution nine thirty-eight, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, relating to Florida's initiative to prevent elder injuries and falls. Making findings, declaring September twenty-second, two thousand thirteen as Fall Prevention Awareness Day. Urging individuals to participate in Florida's initiative to prevent elder injuries and falls, providing for distribution of this resolution, providing an effective aid and providing for adoption.
Thank you, that's.
Move to adopt Resolution nine thirty-eight.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Uh, any discussion on agenda item number 11?
I think you got some, Helen.
I would just like to make a comment. Um, Vice Mayor Breimer has really taken a leadership role in this area. Uh, not just locally, but throughout the state. Uh, the, the latest thing that we heard was when he spoke at, I think it was FSU um, to a very large audience regarding this and um, so, and he was asked to address that gathering. So, um, I thank you for this.
I'd, I'd like to also point to our fire chief, who's been a stalwart in this whole process, chief.
So it was six years ago that we started this program and when we began the program.
So, it was six years ago that we started this program, and when we began the program and kicked it off, we really didn't have a national model to work from. This was kind of new in the public safety arena to do this. And as I said to Vice Mayor Breimer not too long ago, there's hardly a two or three-week period that doesn't go by that we're not being contacted by some other agency in the country that has been funneled to us as being listed as a national model, if you will, for fall prevention. My latest one is St. Johns County, I've been saying Augustine, wanting to kick the program off. We've highly gone and we're getting ready to do one for Ocala, and just, they're just taking our stuff and going with it. And part of the reason is, is that, as we've said, it's the community support that makes it successful. If it was just an endeavor of the fire department only, this would not have been a successful program. It's really a community-based thing. And tomorrow, we will be doing a, basically, part of our seafall program, doing a presentation on falls up at the rec center. Okay? 11:30.
Thank you. Further comments from council? The other thing I think you ought to mention is the impact this has on your EMS calls when you really step up and try to take a knock at this versus letting it happen in the community, because I think that's where you've gotten a lot of speed throughout the state is on that.
And the genesis of it really was, was when we were, our concurrent calls, is that we were, we'd be on a call for a fall, and while we were on that call, there would be another emergency that would occur. And when you get right down to it, you know, some will say that falls are just an inevitable part of aging, but that's not really true. They are preventable. And so, what we were seeing here is, we were seeing items that were very predictable, because when a person falls, it's not one time. They have fallen 10 times before we've ever gotten called. It may have been a lymphosis, or the family's taken care of it. So, it was really trying to get ahead of this and, and, and slow it down. To date, we reduced fractured heads by over 70% in the five-year period, and that is an astronomical, a crazy number. I mean, it's just, what's happened?
Okay. Further comments from council? Thank you. At this time, I'll open it up, agenda item number 11 for public comment. See and none, bring it back to council. Do I have? The thing I'd like to say is, this has also been, this, chief has helped lead this process, but the police department has been a huge part of this as well. I mean, and I want to thank you guys for that. They've partnered well with the fire department and the whole, the whole city taking a look at this. It wasn't just one, it's two of their areas. And Linda Harlow's been a big part of this as well. So, I just want to say thank you, you guys, for all working together on this whole initiative. Thank you. Do I have a motion for the recommendation?
Yeah, I did that already.
I'm sorry. Okay, apologize. Any further comments? Lenore?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, I got off track there. Agenda item number 12, discussion, discuss, take action on Florida Today Submittal for Citizens Volunteer and Organization of the Year Award. Courtney?
Thank you. We were asking for approval of nominations for the Florida Today Volunteer Recognition Awards. This is due tomorrow, but we wanted to bring it to council and get your approval for submitting Marty Hensley for Citizen of the Year, John Fergus for Volunteer of the Year, and the Satellite Beach Women's Club for Organization of the Year. We really wanted to submit Long Doggers for the Business of the Year, but we just couldn't get the information ready for them this year, at this point. So, unless somebody can help me with that by tomorrow, then we can do that. Otherwise, we'll have to wait until next year. But they have been a big part of our community, and we just haven't been able to pull it together in time. But we would like your approval for that, and we will go ahead and submit those tomorrow, by tomorrow, by the deadline.
Can we make a motion to approve all four of them?
Yes, and if we could get the permission, that'd be great.
If you get the information, then it's, I'll make that motion to approve the nomination for Florida Today's Volunteer Recognition Awards. Second. A motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Council comments?
I just want to, these are staff, staff made these recommendations, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'd just like to, I'd just like to comment that these are really worthy candidates. They have contributed so much to this community that it's, it's really almost unbelievable. So, I hope all of them win, and if you need some help on the write-ups tomorrow morning, I'll be available.
Tomorrow morning?
Yeah, 11 o'clock.
The longstanding joke, we have found that she wakes up earlier than I.
Okay. Any further comment from council? Here and now, open this agenda item for public comment. Here and none, back to council. Here and a, further discussion? The only time she's up before 11 is when she's letting out the dog. Okay, thank you. Fully noted. Lenore?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to agenda item number 13, which is Agenda for the City Council, Proposed Workshop Meeting on October 1st.
All right. We're going to be providing you with a book of, you know, policies from other cities, some of the other information about our workload, and we'll be providing some code, property maintenance codes for your reference for the workshop. This workshop, these types of workshops can become dicey in that many people get very heated about these subjects, so I'll be providing some list of rules that I would recommend you use during that workshop, like not listing any particular properties, you know, things like that, not listing specific examples, and keep it broad, in broad terms, unless, not unless a property owner comes and talks about their own, you know, thing. So, I'll send that out to you in advance. You'll get the book in advance of the workshop. So, that's October 1st, starting at 7:00 p.m.
Okay. Further comments on this agenda item? From council or...
For the, for the October 2nd meeting, I'd like to have an item to discuss proposed amendments to council policies and procedures.
Fully noted.
Okay.
It can't be a take action item. Okay, next time.
Has to be one after it's presented.
I see. Okay, so you'll be submitting?
Yes.
Okay. For your, I'm sorry, you need to go to the next agenda, or can I just run it?
Go ahead, take them.
For the October 2nd meeting, you will have a, you'll be interviewing board applicants at 6:45, and then on the October 2nd meeting, we'll be removing the interlocal agreement for emergency operations. We've determined that can be a sitting manager signature. The other items we're going to be adding, you'll be getting a site plan review, and then we'll also be putting an item for the sign ordinance moratorium on your agenda, and I will be sending you some items in advance of the agenda packet, so you have some time to review, because it's pretty extensive.
Steve, thanks, yeah. And again, any other items that council feels that they would like to put on, please give it to them with enough notice that they can get the backup information for it.
And I'm sorry, you also have the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council Agenda Item as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this agenda 13? Here and now, move on to agenda item 14.
Move to adopt the August 21, 2013, regular meeting minutes, as well as the minutes of the September 4, 2013, regular meeting as submitted.
Second. A motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Do I have any further comments?
I do have a question. Courtney, Form 8B is included regarding Mr. Montanaro. Just a question, last time the form was read into the record?
Yes.
Can you explain for the council and to the public why this time it's not being read into the record? Form 8B.
Form 8B.
We had, the vote in conflict form?
Oh, that actually, for a local elected official, is not a requirement by statute, so we don't have to do that. There's some municipalities do as an extra precaution, so my former municipality did, so it's really up to you whether or not you want to move forward in not doing that. It's just kind of, it's just an extra precaution. We haven't done it in the past, I think that confused some people, and I apologize for that, it's just the way I'm used to doing things.
Okay. Any, we have a motion on the floor, any further issues with the minutes? Lenore?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries. One other item of business, dress code generally changes October 1st, it's still pretty hot. What's the council wishes? One more month there to go with the code on the 1st, it's up to the council.
I'm fine with summer dress for another month.
So, I would just like to say that one thing, because when the dress code was changed before, there was a lot of backlash. I'm fine with going formal.
Again, there's four votes here. Backlash, I don't remember, to be honest with you. I know, it's just, it's our vote, how we would like to handle it. What's the wishes of the council? I'll have, you know...
Send it another month?
Send it a month?
I'm fine with that, yeah, another month.
Send it a month, agenda first. Okay. Thank you. Any further business to come before council? Here and none, meetings adjourned.